Can I speak up? Okay, great. All right, well, welcome everybody to Thomas Cafe. It's a beautiful Sunday and welcome to downtown Oxnard. We are here today to celebrate and to also to support the announcement of Aaron Starr's campaign for city council. I first met Aaron Starr about two years ago on the campaign trail and you know, I was really impressed, but I wasn't sure what to think of this man in a shiny suit and these beautiful bright eyes. I didn't know what to think of this man, but over time I watched him closely and earlier this year when he led the petition drive to protest the hike in the ways of the utility rates, I watched him closely and I saw how driven he was and how focused he was to get this message out, to get in front of the voters. And I saw that hard work and then I had the opportunity to meet his wife Alicia and I kind of thought Aaron and Alicia, it's like it's double A, double R, like Aaron Starr. So when you vote for Aaron Starr, you're not just getting Aaron, you're also getting that support that he has with his wonderful wife Alicia. So the reason why I'm supporting Aaron Starr is that I believe he's the most experienced candidate on the ballot. He's the most qualified. This man will be able to do things for our government that no one in office can do right now. And I know that he is, he's someone that's going to stand up for us because when he was challenged by his own city council and his own community, and he's going to tell you that story, he did not run away from that fight. He stood up to that fight and at great personal expense to himself, he chose to fight back for the rest of the stakeholders. And now we're at a critical crossroads in our community, not only nationally, because this is going to be the most important election in our generation, but locally there is so much happening that if we don't elect Aaron Starr, we do not know where Oxnard can turn. So this November, it will be very important for us to support Measure M and that will be vote yes to pay less and also to support Aaron as he runs for this council. So with that said, I would like to introduce to all of you, ladies and gentlemen, for Oxnard City Council, Aaron Starr.
Well folks, thank you so much. It's really great to be here. I just see Oxnard as having so much potential and it would do so much more, we could all accomplish so much more if the government also got out of the way. So I find that today, I find that today, the city doesn't really respect the residents in Oxnard. I think in many ways, it's just abuse of them. The way that I've observed it most recently, of course, is with the utility rate increase. They're trying to increase typical households wastewater bill by $326 per year. And that's a lot of money. We're talking about 87% rate increase and we're talking about spending money not to actually improve the system. We're talking about spending money on the food dollars. They might spend $675 million on these capital expenditures for a, maybe it brings in $30 million of revenue a year right now. So that's like a $17, $18 million, $17, $18 years' worth of volume of backup. So there's about $516 million in capital expenditures they want to make for a brand new surgery plant when they know they can fix the existing one for less than $80 million. So is this type of spending where it's really not aimed towards your benefit, but towards the end of consultants? That's where I have a real problem with that. So I see that there's great potential here. We've got a lot of people in Oxnard who are just simply hardworking, productive. I see that there's amazing potential within our city. And the challenge we're experiencing today is that the city doesn't know how to do very many things well. And when you think about your own life, typically, we don't all do everything well in life. We usually do only a few things we really do well. I do accounting pretty well, which you wouldn't want me to be fixing cars. And this is a great restaurant here, maybe they don't do great photography, I don't know. But everybody has their, what they're good at. And you can't be good at everything. So what do you do? You have other people do for you what you can't do well. And the problem with the city is the city wants to be a quote-unquote full-service city. Well, that means they want to do lots of things, lots of things that they're just not good at. If you just look at the holiday of our streets, for example, you can see that as an example. So I think what the city needs to do is it needs to focus on the basics. Focus on the basics, folks, because on public safety, focus on infrastructure, and then look at other alternatives to having the city do, have others do what the city needs to do well. Do you look at other cities in mature county? Other cities will contract out where they're not good at. For example, most cities in mature counties will contract up their garbage collection. So they have E.J. Harrison, they do it, they do a great job, they do it for less money than what it costs to do. So I think it's need that sort of mindset, a management mindset, to say, well, what is it that we're good at and what is it that we're not good at? And there are some things that may be more contracted out than we can announce because we're better at it. And there are some things that we're not so good at that we need to have others do for ourselves. Yeah, I think there is, and we have a really unfriendly business environment. I just care for many, many stories about how difficult it is to get permit if you want to attend improvement or if you wanted to improve your home. So in my mind, this is just disastrous for our city. There's many jobs that don't get created because the tenant improvements never get done or the building never gets constructed. And that's just, that's just really awful for all of us because that means we're all traveling out of town to get to work or we're unemployed. There's just so much potential here in the city. If we just let people improve their own lives, it's going to improve everybody else's lives. So that's just sort of the general philosophy that I bring here. So basically, just to really summarize it, I'm not going to give you a long speech. Basically, you need somebody with a management experience background. You don't have that today on the city council. I think I can bring that and I can help bring a business-friendly environment, question things. There's a lot of, a lot of activity that go on, activity under the radar where there's not a lot of transparency, a lot of inefficiency. I think that will clear up if you just bring the right mindset. So I really believe that together we can do this. I'm launching my campaign today. I think we have a much stronger campaign than we did even just two years ago. I think we have a real possibility of winning. And I ask all of you, if you haven't done it so already, to please sign my nomination papers so that I can be on the ballot. And if you would like to help, endorse, we've got forums here, we can send it to the doors if you want a yard sign when it comes, grave when they're printed and when you go out, please check out that box. And that is all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Does anybody have any questions or anything that is important to them that they wanted to speak on?
I'll be talking about investment policy. They want to talk at length about the season's investment policy.
Well, we'd act for the future treasurer to make that sort of... Anyone else? Anyone else? Feel free, it's an open forum.
Yes, sir. I have this big question. My wife Karen, I had an experience with you, you have to change it. Here we have, I had numerous encampments with the mayor and the city council. Just to give a little background, I went through, I had some cancer surgery last year, 40 days of radiation. But, and Mr. Starr's incentive and the rest, kind of brought me back to getting involved in the city council and watching what's been going on. And it's appalling. We have a bunch of amateurs and I will leave them nameless, but there are three other councils. One, who is wishy-washy. Two, who only do what the city manager says. Both of the other two, one has stepped out. I hope you accept his role as the new councilman. But this is a time for all of us to step forward. I live over in Mandalay Bay, but candidly, I'm the president of the company, chairman of a couple others. I'm over it. I'm done with this crap. Mr. Starr presents his case. He's got his numbers together. You didn't, you didn't speak against the city manager getting his little bonus to the increase when it's unjustified, but to that case, I wholly, wholly support Mr. Starr and I'm happy to do it. If I could run a check today, I would, to your council side. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're feeling great. Keep it great. I was going to ask some of your maybe, not to put you on the spot, but some of your leadership and governance experience.
Well, also, my leadership is in business, so I've never... This is not, I'm not seeking a different career, I really love what I do, but I do see that this city has problems. I'll give you an idea here of what I'm talking about. Back in 1996, 1997, the city was looking at conservation.com hadn't been come to the city. And at the time, we were back in Chatsworth and we were very frustrated working in the Los Angeles area. So other cities were starting their projects. And at the time, I think the mayor, one of the council members, somebody in the city manager, and I think somebody at the head of the building and safety came to visit our company, this is where I was with the company. And we said, well, what do you want for us to come to Oxnard? And these other cities were offering a plan, they were offering aspirational incentives and that sort of thing. But what Oxnard said to us was, we'll get you, we'll get you through the building department in three weeks. And we thought, sulk. That is what brought us here to Oxnard. It was not that we wanted handouts, it's just that we just wanted to get the job done. We just wanted to open up here. So we were able to come, basically build a 400,000 square foot building from, you know, design to end, get through the city, seven months. That's just, you can't do that today. And I think at the time, we were hiring about 400 people and today, we've got a million square feet, we have about 1300 people. We need to bring that type of mindset to this city. And if we can do that, we can break lots of big companies here and small companies here. For the most part, I think our city will do a lot for the company I work for because we're a big player in town. I'm not concerned about my company, the company, the employer I'm working for. I'm more concerned about all the small companies that, you know, have so much trouble just trying to open up business here. There's just no excuse for that. We have so many, so much potential here. And that's what's causing me to want to run for this, not because I'm seeking a career in politics. I kind of detest it right now. I really enjoyed being the controller for my company, but I see an opportunity here to volunteer and step up in the play and get rid of all the barriers that keep us from making us be the best we can be. So that's where I'm coming from.
For years, I've joined an organization, I think it's called the Economic Development, that hears what business owners have to say to the city of Oxnard. And I guess my biggest fear is being a business owner in the city of Oxnard is that you're so afraid to say anything to city council or anything or bring your concerns up there because of fear. And that's why these organizations exist, because they're going to shut down small businesses if we open up our mouth. And that to me is not being in business in the city of Oxnard. I run a family business that's been here for over 40 years and it's been difficult. I opened up a second business three years ago and if you've ever filed to go get a business license, it took me all day long to do this, to get a simple business license. I think there needs to be change down there. You know, they, they, they want us for our money, but they don't want to hear us what we have to say. So a lot of the business owners don't say anything. I know we don't, because we're in fear of them shutting us down. We're not as big as Hoss. We're family, small owned businesses. And if we have any concerns, we have nowhere to take it.
I've heard your score out from a lot of people, they're concerned about retaliation for the city.
Exactly.
And that's, it's a shame that here we are in America, we have to worry about something like that. You'd expect that on some foreign land. It's also a shame that we need an entity like Edco. We don't have Edco's because the city is so poor in helping out businesses through the system that you have to go outside the city in order to get someone to help you through it. We need to create an environment where you don't need an Edco. That's what we need to do. And you know, as far as retaliation, I'm personally, I'm worried about it. Obviously, they're suing me now and I'm standing up to them. And it'll be very interesting if, assuming I get on the council, I won't wonder how they'll want to handle that lawsuit once I'm on the council, as a council member. So I don't know how that works, whether I get to be in closed session and discussing the merits of continuing the case or not. But I'm, I've got, people say I have a reputation of willing to take on big fights. And I'm here to step up for you folks. I'm here to be your champion. So I understand that you're afraid of retaliation and you know, I understand all of us, I do a little bit, but somebody has to step up and I'm willing to do that. And one way or another, we will reform city hall. We will make it better. We will create an environment where it's possible to do business here. We will create an environment where it's possible to improve your home without having to be nickel and dime at every single fee that's out there. Where the fees can you actually receive the cost of improvement? We will make this work. And I'm, I'm the type of person who, just for my training, I have to get things done. There's nothing that's going to stop me from making this work. And with your support, I will help you get there.
One of my concerns is that I don't want this city to go opposite like Bell in L.A., Kudati, you know, I think there's a certain flavor of that. With the pensions going out of hand, some of the contracts going out of hand, there's no accountability. I'm concerned about this city. Like San Bernardino, you know, they went bankrupt. Stockton went bankrupt. And the way we're headed right now, there's that possibility, especially with all the overhead costs of audits and other legal problems the city has. We have the most beautiful weather in the world here. There's no reason that we should be in this situation. A lot of my schoolmates, they moved to Camarillo because they're fed up with the city government. So that's what I'm concerned.
Camarillo is a well-run city. I think we should look to them as a model. We don't have to reinvent everything here. I think we can find other cities that can run their efforts, but Camarillo does a great job. Simi Valley does a great job.
It's interesting because one of my friends and I were in jail one time, we popped the heads of tele. And my friend told heads of tele, I said, you know, Ed, you don't have to reinvent the queue. Why don't you go to Thousand Oaks in Camarillo? You get some ideas how the city should be run. We never saw heads of tele in the jury, you know.
I mean, I don't know why we have our own trash. I don't know why we have our own library here. I would, cities, they contract out to the county library. Why, why do we feel like we have to do everything here to get things done? I think, I don't think there should be any secrets. I think we should look at every single of our enterprises that we run and ask ourselves, are we the best at it or somebody else's? There are some cases where we're contracting out, we need to bring it in else, because we're better at it. There are some cases where we're not so good at what we do and have to basically go out elsewhere. I think you need to ask the questions. You can't just keep doing the same thing because you've always been doing it. You've got to be willing to ask the basic question, why? Why are we doing it this way today? Does it make sense? Is there a better way? And as long as you're willing to ask those questions and seriously analyze it, I think we can come up with a better outcome. But I think that's what we all want, I think we all want the government to provide us with the best service for the dollars that we're paying. So let's do that. Let's figure out a way to do that. Let's bring the type of business sense to city hall. Let's figure out ways to do things more efficiently. That's what it's all about.
This is the, the area, they're going to Austin, Texas, they're all moving, isn't it what's going on here?
This is not, it groups and I kind of have a lot of voice, but it is amazing that when we all got the mailing in December about the utility rates increase, for Christmas, my brother, his wife, his grandkid, they were all at the house. And I said, look at this. And he flips through it in 15 minutes, he said, if they're doing this under the guise of Prop 11, go to court, it'll all get thrown out. Because you cannot transfer funds for Prop 11, Prop 11 utility rate increases to the general fund, which is exactly, and this is where Mr. Starr got the thread, you cannot transfer those funds. So I laughed with the mayor a month and a half ago at breakfast. I told him that. He said, well, what happened? So I said, well, look at San Juan Capistrano, they're now trying to figure out how to pay $4.3 million back to the tax holder, the property tax holders for the excessive rate increases because they're unauthorized. So there's stuff going on, even though, I got to tell you, Oxnard is a council. They've moved along where it was, two years, three years ago, four years ago, but the fundamental lack of knowledge, lack of research. They're hearing your mayor look you in the face and say, holy shit, are you kidding? Pardon my French. But to me, that was the catalyst for me to start engaging with Aaron, following Aaron, listening to what he's saying, looking at what he's saying. There is a lot. I come out of business. You don't give the city manager and all the city council, or all the members of the city employee, you know, 5% increase, you're bankrupt. You don't send councilman Padilla to our sister city in Mexico at our expense when we're in financial problems. There should be a lot of that. I mean, and they should resign, which is, I asked them to do that as well, but I also asked the mayor for them to resign. So anyway, I guess what you're sensing in me is, I'm here on a Sunday with the family at the house, the grandkids at the house. Pardon my French again, I'm pissed. I'm over this crap. I'm over.
Patrick makes some really good points here. For example, utilities, the city is charging utilities, I think about $7 million a year for costs that involve, oh, fixing roads and police protection, that sort of thing. I don't know how much police protection or water plant needs. It just, what's happening is, it's really a way to siphon off money from utilities to the general fund, so they can then charge you higher utility rates. And there's just so many, this, these games, just have to stop. This is not something that should be allowed. You can't, on one end, like, oh, my expenses are too high for utilities, and yet, all you're doing is you're increasing the expense of your utilities, wasting money to the general fund in the city. So that's, that's a problem.
Aaron, I have three questions. As you know, cities are municipal corporations chartered by the state. The general law is, in the case of Oxnard, a charter city where there are increased abilities for local people. And as you also know, Oxnard is the 19th largest city in the state of California, which itself is the seventh or eighth largest economic unit in the world. First question is, in light of, and I realize this news just came recently about the treasurer resigning, but in light of your background and experience, why would you choose to run for council as opposed to city treasurer?
Or mayor?
For one, I'm not looking for a pay cut that gives me... That's a full-time job, from my understanding. I'm very happy being a financial controller. I am not going into politics to make a living at it. So city council makes a lot more sense to me. Frankly, my preference is if one's going to be mayor, I think it's better to have been on the city council first. So I think that's, so that's where I'm coming from.
I like the idea of original city. Go for mayor.
The second question is, in light of that, as you know, in California, cities have what are called a weak mayor, strong city management form of government. And there are essentially only two employees the city council directs and are accountable to, that they are accountable to the council, the city mayor, you're a city attorney. From your experience and how that form of government is manifesting itself in Oxnard, what are strengths that you see and what are weaknesses between the balance of governance by the council and management by the management organization of the city manager?
What I see as a city council today is that they often get reports at the last possible moment at CSM for a decision that they make on Tuesday. And under that environment, that tendency is for city council to go approve, 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 not where they ask the tough questions. You can either set a standard with management and say, this is what I expect, I expect to get reports you give in advance so I can review them. One thing that bothers me about the management of the city is that when reports presented, often they don't present alternatives, saying, here's your various alternatives, here's your trade-offs, and if you pick this, go on this, you pick this or that. Instead, often it's, here's a proposal. I understand, but that's just not acceptable. I would never accept that from anybody answering my mail. And I would set the tone on the city council saying, no, you will present multiple options so that we can weigh them. You're not going to just give us something at the last possible moment where we're up against a wall and we're going to have to make a decision right then and there. So the problem is that the city council doesn't manage the management. If the city council were in a better position to manage the manager, I think you'd get a better outcome.
The last question is, you touched on it just a moment ago, saying that I would not accept that standard of managing the city manager or any management process. As you know, the council requires three votes to accomplish something. So how do you get to three? What skill sets, what leadership experience, what background, what strengths do you view that you can get to three?
You want some to react? I've served on a number of boards. And one thing that just always seems to happen, whether, and I don't have to be the chairman of the board, but for some reason, often I wind up running the operation. And I don't know why that's the catch, it just seems to happen. So typically, what happens is you find somebody who's willing to go boldly forward, willing to ask intelligent questions, and then the other people on the board soon say, that makes sense. I can understand that. Let's go that direction. That's just been my experience over and over again. And that may be completely different on this one, we'll find out. But I can just tell you that my experience has always been that I pretty much wind up assuming a leadership position, whether I had the talent or not. So that's, that's what I expect to happen here as well. Again, I think that I'll work with whoever's there and I'll figure out what it is that's important to them. And based on what's important to them and what I think is important to the community, we will come up and work on the politics of what's possible. You know, to some extent, I'm a nineteen list, but I have a tempered with what's practical. And at the end of the day, if I can't get a full vote, I'm getting a half vote. I'm getting whatever decision is going to move the ball forward. And I'm confident that my colleagues on the city council will see that what we have in mind is good for the city and that it's the right direction. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much, folks. Having done so already, the nomination of petition is Alicia's fine hands here, so if you are a registered voter for Oxnard, please sign. If you would like to help out today by endorsing, we have these clipboards here so that you can sign as an endorsement. If you want a yard sign, we'll get those out. Check them out. If you want to make a donation, that's a possible thing to do as well here. So thank you very much and happy to talk to anybody, guys. Good luck. as well here. So thank you very much, and happy to talk to anybody. Guys, if you have questions.
So ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being here. Clearly, you can see that we need Aaron Starr on the Oxnard City Council. His intelligence, his understanding of the numbers, his integrity will go so far to help this community. So please tell your, your family, tell your friends, your neighbors, we have a lot of work to do until November. We are also working on Measure M. But with, together, we can move Oxnard forward with, by supporting Aaron Starr. Thank you all for being here today.
So, thank you very much for being here, Aaron. So, you know, appreciate everybody coming out here and supporting everyone as well. We heard little things that, you know, very important and wouldn't be done. So as far as downtown, I've been in business here sixteen years, and growing up here all my life. I've been here, resident, you know, thirty-seven years. And I've seen downtown, you know, up and down as far as cleanliness, and just the way, overall, the way it looks, and the way the boulevard has really has not changed since, you know, since I was a kid. And now that, you know, I'm in business now, and I see things, and I want people to come to downtown, do you see things that the city can do for us to help us be, to attract these people, you know? Because people want to, they want to go to the collection. You know, I, I was here downtown last night, and then went to the collection, and it feels good to go to the collection. I'm proud that the city has that, in its backyard. That's a great facility, that's a model for us to look at as a downtown, how they organize, you know, their downtown. But I ask you, what can the city do for downtown?
Mostly get out of the way. Frankly, I think about this way, there's a permit for everything here. I think if you want to have dancing, it's a $4,000 permit. That's nuts. If you want to be open late, you need special permission in this city. I think you have trouble getting, I think you want to be open past 10:00 p.m., I think you need a special permit to do that in downtown.
Paint permit?
What?
Paint permit?
Yeah, there's painting, yeah, painting permits, there's. So, I mean, think about this way here, if you want to be entertained on a Friday night, you can go someplace where they roll up the sidewalks at 10:00 p.m. No. You're going to downtown Ventura right now, where that opportunity is there where you can, you can be out there late night with your friends. That opportunity isn't here because we're constraining people here. We've got to get rid of the constraints. You shouldn't need a special design review committee just for downtown Oxnard if you want to change the outside of your building. That's just nuts. What's so different about downtown Oxnard that we have to put extra constraints on downtown Oxnard versus the rest of the city? I can't think of a reason why. The other thing we need to do is we need to make sure that we focus on the basics in this city. Our roads are horrible, because we don't spend the money on the roads. Remember back in 2008, when we had Measure O passed, and said, give us this extra half set sales tax, and we'll be getting more services? And they retouted the roads. Well, how many of you have seen market improvements to the roads?
It's gotten worse.
It has gotten worse. So it's about growing promises. It's about, basically, but the city not keeping its word. It's about them wanting to spend, you know, hold out this carrot, saying, hey, give us extra money and we'll do this. And then they get it from you, and then they spend the money somewhere else.
In a dirt one.
Yeah. So it's like, if I'm right in my comparison, it's like loosening the football. Okay? We're, we're traveling right now, and we're the ones that keep going. Can't have football, and the city is loosening, just yanking it from us. That's got to stop. So it's about priorities, focus on the basics. If we can get the basics done, I think we can make the downtown more than. I think we can get rid of a lot of regulations that interfere with the really good business. I think there's a lot of opportunities to, right now, you've got arcane rules about what type of business can open here, what type of business can't open here. I mean, if you want them to pay, for example, you have, here, the board's right there, you could open that up today, because it doesn't get their criteria of what a legitimate business is here. The city thinks that they're better deciding what businesses should go here, rather than the people who are actually putting their money on the line. So it's about getting the city out of the way. If we can get out of the way, you're going to see this downtown blossom. It will blossom. It will attract people here. If we just focus on the basics and make the roads and sidewalks better, it will blossom. That's what needs to happen. Thank you.